Okay, so I will call the September fifth, twenty eighteen zoning board of appeals meeting to order at seven thirty five P M. I am Casey Bailey, Chair of the zoning board. Tonight, we don't have any public hearings or applications before us, this is just a business meeting with a fairly short agenda. The first agenda item is welcoming two new members to the board. We have John Stokes and Chris Goodwin, who have volunteered their time to join us, and we're very appreciative of their efforts so far. And they're excited to have them join us for now a five-member board as we are supposed to be. So, thank you again, welcome. Now, moving on to that to discuss our second agenda item being discussing roles and responsibilities of zoning board members. Unfortunately, we're not gonna stay a five-member board for very long, as I am moving on. I'm, we're actually moving out of Groveland in the next couple of weeks, so I will be resigning from the board soon. So, I wanted to take the time today to discuss sort of future of the board, kind of figuring out who's gonna take the role of Chair. And sort of help figure out like how, how the board runs and, and what sort of responsibilities there are for board members to, to, you know, keep things moving on. So, unfortunately, as I was just telling Julie, I had prepared a number of things to help that process that I forgot to print from work. And remembered halfway to the train. So, I certainly have a lot of things that I can share electronically later, just, I just started making some outlines of, you know, the timing of processing applications, who's responsible for what, and kind of the checks and balances between the Chair and other members and our Clerk Secretary, and just sort of making sure that everything gets posted, delivered, reviewed, processed sufficiently. And I have a number of other documents that I can help, you know, with the process of drafting decisions, best practices for minutes, and that kind of, those sorts of things. But the, I think the biggest question, I think, is going to be who's going to take over the role as Chair. And given that we have two brand-new members, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the best process. And that's not any, no judgment, just, just uh-
I'm not offended, yeah.
No offense taken.
Just that it's a, a little bit of a learning curve, being on the board as well as being Chair. And while I do hope that the good selectmen of our town will appoint another new member to, to sit in my place, as well as ideally an alternate to help relieve, you know, the, the times when people can't be here for meetings in the short term. I think we do need to pick between Jason and Kathy as to chair responsibilities. And that doesn't mean that it's not something that can be shared, absolutely, because it is a lot of work. However, running the meetings is something that kind of is a single-person responsibility. And I'm not gonna, like, I'm having to pick between you two, and I don't want to. But is there a desire amongst either of you that you would like to, to step into the role?
How about you?
I'm not sure I'd have the time to do anything outside of the meetings at this point. I mean, maybe a little bit here and there, but I wouldn't be able to commit to reviewing, you know, the reviewing and the keeping up with everything.
Do you think you could commit to it for the near term of like through the end of the year? And then it be revisited beginning of the year?
I'm, I'm a little hesitant only because I have a very heavy work schedule right now. But I'm willing to help, I'm, I'm not gonna just say flat-out no. I mean, I'm happy to help run the meetings and stuff like that and do that. But, um, but if Jason be willing, maybe we could do a little bit together, like bounce-
Can we co-chair?
Yeah.
Only because, um, there are some things that he may know more than I do or whatever. And I, I feel like if-
Like what?
Like a second pair of eyes maybe sometimes when you're looking at something.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm not an attorney, not even close.
And I don't think you have to be, um-
Well, that's good, 'cause nobody is, other than you.
Well, I, so I just, I, I would feel a little better, I think, if, if I had maybe a second person to look at something or like, what do you think of this, or someone to bounce something off of.
I think that's certainly expected. But in terms of the running of the meetings, which really isn't that, I mean, it's, you just gotta be vocal. And I'm not, but I do it, Tom quit and I stepped up, so. Remember?
Do you wanna maybe help run the meetings, and I could do the behind-the-scenes stuff?
If you wanna try it, see how it goes.
Since you're here at the meeting, maybe you can run the mea- and then I can help with like coordinate with Julie and stuff like-
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I can look at stuff if needed, but you can't really commit.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, so, I really wish I printed everything, but, I mean, running the meetings is, is pretty, you know, you're ma- you're making sure that people aren't talking over the other people.
Yeah.
You know, I would-
They might not like it.
Well, it's not fun.
Yeah, that, that part makes me a little, yeah, but-
And then, as far as processing applications, just for John and Chris's benefit, our applications need to be in by the tenth of the month every month to be on the next agenda, which is our, you know, the first Wednesday of the month. In that timeframe, what happens is Julie will review the application, work up a legal notice that then has to go to the newspaper, has to get posted in Town Hall, and has to be mailed to a butters. And you guys, I, I wrote all of this down.
Okay, good.
I really did, just didn't bring it with me. I'll send it to you. So, and Julie's pretty, I mean, it's pretty seamless with Julie's doing that, I mean, she's got this down pat and has done it for a number for forever.
They've been doing it for fifteen years.
I would just, you know, I would review the legal notices just to make sure everything matched, you know, the, you know, addresses, dates, zoning districts, just to make sure it looked right. And then Julie sends out the materials to everybody, and, you know, like we always do, we would review them before. So, the prep for a meeting was very minimal for me, it was just mostly just confirming that everything was going out as it, as it was supposed to, which it always did. And post-meeting decision writing was, was the kind of the bigger of the tasks. But I think I've got a pretty good template down for any, we've done a number of decisions of different kinds, so variances, special permits, special permits for non-conforming lots or uses, which is a little different. And I think there's, there's, I think we had one appeal, so like those formats are kind of set, and it's just a matter of plugging in really the facts of the application. But it, I mean, that does take a little bit of time, and, and probably is something that should take two sets of eyes, just to make sure that it, it's being, you know, that the decision is consistent with what was discussed at the meetings. And then it's a matter of filing that decision with Town Clerk and giving the applicant's notice. Kind of, that's sort of the nutshell of the process.
Is coordinating with either the legal side-
If there's something that comes up that you think that one, that, you know, Sam is extremely helpful. And then, when there's something that's a legal question, the process is to email Denise to confirm you have authority to contact Town Council. And she'll usually give you the, the person who's best suited to the issue. And I've never had her say no, so, I mean.
I don't think we've had much.
We haven't had much, but, um-
But it doesn't mean there won't be something.
No, I mean, who knows what's, what's around the corner. As far as running a meeting, I think you guys know this, you know, it's, it's a application presentation, questions from the board, opening to the public, moderating who's talking, so that the record's clear of, you know, who it is and what, and there aren't people talking over each other. Letting applicants respond to further questions from the board and things that the public has said. Where, where it's a public hearing situation, public hearings are where testimony can be given and evidence can be given, so once that's closed, there's no more that can really come into the record. And then, you know, our practice has been to deliberate on applications right after we close the public hearing. But it, there's no requirement that that hap- I mean, you can, you can even deliberate all of your applications at the end of a meeting or some future date, like it's, you know, there's a lot of ways to skin a cat on a public meeting, but, you know, that would be up to you guys. One other thing that would be maybe helpful for all of you is the Citizens Planning Training Commission, CPTC. They run trainings for boards specifically in zoning and planning and to help you, you know, understand how to, what's required, how, how to run a good meeting, that kind of thing. And fortunately, I don't have the budget numbers, but our budget does allow for, I mean, there, there's compensate, you know, to reimburse you for, for taking those trainings if, if that's something you're interested in. I, I put together a whole thing of like sample minutes, sample decisions, sample legal notices to bestow amongst you.
Well, I would definitely recommend that, the, for the new members to go through the Merrimack Pl- Valley Planning Commission. They definitely have some great classes on like what it takes to be a member, what, like just basic, the basic rules and regulations.
Yeah, the basics of zoning in Massachusetts and zoning boards.
Julie, do you have any information on those classes? No? Did they ever send anything to you or?
I haven't, no, I usually get something, but I haven't gotten anything recently.
You haven't, okay. Do you ever get anything?
Me?
Yeah.
I get stuff from CPTC.
See, I've never gotten anything from that, but I've ta- I took a couple of classes at Merrimack Plant, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission,
We're in Valley Planning Commission.
Which is right in Den- um, right in Heverle, on the corner of like Summer Street and I think that's Wyner Street.
Mhm.
So, it, there's like a little building out back, it's pretty, it's like an evening class.
Okay.
But it's very helpful if you're not quite sure, if you've never been on a board before, it kind of gets you the ro- um, just kind of how things roll, you know, and it's a good, nice backbone.
Yeah. I was just looking it up.
And then they have other classes that they offer too, but, um, one is just like the basic, like how to be a board member. What can you do, what can't you do, and then they have, don't they have the state ethics, Julie? That did the-
They did take the state ethics test online, yeah.
Did you guys swear in with the Town Clerk yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Does she talk to you about the state ethics? No, so there's, um, basically you take an online quiz, and it's like give you some information to read. You take the quiz, and then it's pretty simple, but basically you don't steal or no conflict of interest, that kind of thing. And then, once you pa- you just sign up essentially, it's, it's pretty simple. I think it took me, I don't know, ten or fifteen minutes, it's not that bad. And it's all right online, it's pretty simple.
Yeah, um-
Do you print your certificate and you have it to the authority?
You have to-
Oh, see?
Yeah, you have to do the training once every two years, I believe it is, to, um, 'cause as a board member, you are a, um, I think it's, I think we're classified as special municipal employees, so you, you are required to live up to the same code of ethics as any state or municipal employee.
And there is a link to that somewhere. I don't know if I still have it, but if not, you can get it from the Town Clerk, she should have it too.
Yeah, she, she should have given it to you.
'Cause every municipal employee has to do it.
It looks like CPTC's trainings are in October, November, so that'll be coming up, so that's good.
Oh, that might be a good opportunity.
So, I'm sorry to leave you guys, but we're moving to Maine, so, yeah.
I think she's moving just 'cause she wanted to get away from us.
It's not a whole reason, it's not a whole reason.
Whereabouts in Maine?
Um, Bethel, actually.
How's that?
Yeah, yeah.
Do, didn't you live in Maine before?
We used to live in Portland, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, and we're just sort of taking some time. It's been a, like, really busy and stressful, like, seven years, and just gonna not work so hard for a bit.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Excellent, and going to Boston every day and wanting to do that.
Yeah, although, I mean, I hope nobody from work's watching, 'cause I have not yet given notice until I talk yet, but- Um, but that will happen soon enough, so, yeah.
I'm sure they're all very excited to see the next edition of Groveland zoning board meeting.
Right.
A new one was posted, we gotta watch.
Yep, um, so, uh, also for, did you guys both get a copy of our bylaws?
Uh, I-
Like the, is there any bylaws, the big ones?
I have.
Okay. Um-
It's also online.
It is online. I think Ann-
It's on the website, on the Groveland website.
I think Ann might have copies, um-
Sam, I think, had some extras of those as well.
Okay, from town meeting, um-
And what gym, and the planning department?
From eighteen or seventeen?
Well, yeah, they should be the most up-to-date ones, although I have not heard, there was one bylaw that was still being reviewed by the Attorney General that I haven't heard, whether it was approved or not.
I think we got our approval last year in August.
Was it, I thought that Denise, I thought there was one that was pending.
Yeah, so we had, we had the vote at town meeting on some items to add to the zoning regulations. So, once that's done, it goes to the Attorney General for review. And once they review it, then they send it back to you and say, yes, it's okay, no, we recommend this, that. And I think, we had a similar thing last year, and I think we heard back around the end of August.
This says that this was in June, she says they approved the marijuana moratorium, the changes to definitions and changes to home occupations, and are continuing a review of the accessory apartments and the density and dimensional regulations, and will have a decision by August twenty-third. I've not heard anything since then.
Well, that would be very important.
That would be important to-
Because we do get a fair amount of those, um, accessory apartment uses that, you can ask Mr. Stokes down there, I'm sure he's familiar with that. So, we do get a fair amount of those, so it would be nice to have like a concrete answer one way or the other, because once it's voted on a town meeting, it's, it's active, so, right?
Yes, it's effective as of the date of town meeting, and if for some reason the Attorney General disapproves of it, then it's like retroactively ineffective, it's the weirdest, uh, you know, it doesn't make any sense, and it's functionally impossible to deal with, but-
Well, it makes sense, because technically the town really doesn't have the authority to do anything without the state approving it. So, until they get around to it-
But, but any applications that come in in the meantime have to be processed under the new bylaw, because it is technically effective until it's, until we're told it's not effective.
Right.
In which case, the, our town council suggestion was to include a note in any decision based on the bylaw that was still pending approval, saying, you know, your, these rights are not totally firm. Your reliance on them is, is at your risk, so, yeah, I know, awesome.
That's great.
What else do you guys need to-
Thankfully, we haven't had any yet.
No, yeah, I know. Oh, also, we, um, we adopted ru- rules and regulations for the board over the, over the past year, they're, they're fairly detailed. So, those are something, they're on our website, if you haven't read them, you should take a look at them. And they talk about nominating chairs and vice-chairs, so getting back to that, um-
Next segue.
Yeah, thank you.
She's very smooth.
Um, could we designate Jason as Chair to run, you know, and, and Kathy as Vice Chair with the acknowledgement that you guys will split the work between you, as we kind of already discussed?
I don't know.
I, I'm fine with that, but it's up to you, Jason.
Or, just 'cause they, Jason's already Vice Chair, so I was gonna promote you just one step.
Well, but he'll actually be the visible part?
Right, that's why I was thinking, Chair.
That's, yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
I'll help you, we'll figure it out together.
Okay.
With Julie, Julie will save us.
No, I'm not worried about figuring out. I'm just worried about not getting to things that should be done more than anything else.
Well, Julie and I can work together on that, and then, you know, come up, and I'll tag you when-
Not that it's impossible, it's just, you know,
I think the biggest thing is-
I don't wanna get into a situation where I don't get something done in time.
I'm more ready to.
The biggest thing, I think, is finding out the decisions.
Yeah.
To ensure that, you know, the, the grammatical corrections, you know, and all that's all right.
No, you don't wanna look at the grammatical corrections.
Well, that's good, 'cause that's what I'm good at, so I'll do that, and then we can, you can help me with the technical stuff.
I think the important thing is also communication, if you're like in a situation you can't get it done, it needs to get done, like let people know so that somebody else can step in.
Well, I think that's the good thing about having a co, in case, you know, someone's on vacation or something, you know, there's someone who is already kind of in the middle of it and knows what's going on.
Yeah, and while, I'm gonna say this to the public here, decisions are supposed to be drafted and filed within fourteen days, there is no consequence if you don't do that. So, like, it's not the, other than bad customer service to your townsfolk, it's, there's no, like, legal consequence to not doing so, um, other than having attorneys calling you and saying, where's my decision? Um, all right, so I, I'm gonna make a motion that we, that, um, that Jason be named as Chair of the zoning board and that Kathy be named as Vice Chair of the zoning board, uh, going forward.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chris, all in favor? Unanimous. Sort of unwillingly, but thank you, guys, um, I appreciate, you know, it's, it's hard to pass it on, but I, I know it's in good hands, so I appreciate it. I'm very sad, sorry. You guys can still call me, but now I, I'm gonna charge a consulting fee.
Aw, well, I, I really do wish you good luck, I, I hope it, it's a good move for you.
Thank you.
It's very sad to see you go, you've done so much for the board.
Yeah.
You revolutionized this board, really, since you've been here in the short time it has been.
I appreciate that.
And, um, it has made the board run so much smoother, and just not procedurally, but, you know, just the team members working together, it's just been a really nice experience working with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And seriously, I don't mind answering questions if you guys have stuff that's-
I might call in a panic.
No problem, you know, I, I won't be at work, so it's, it'll be funny. Um, okay, um-
Sleepboard and email, that's all.
Well, it's the same email, it's, it's, don't, don't email my work email, but my Gmail is fine. So, Jason, I'm gonna give this to you, this was my notebook, just of, um, it has, it's just got the open meeting law, the right, like, checklist for if you need to go into executive session, you know, like what are the reasons that you can do that, the ethics law and the zoning law. And this one, the decision-making requirements of the zoning act is the last one, you can find it online too. It's, um, it's a pretty good resource for writing decisions, 'cause it gives you all of the, like, this, the points of law that you have to make a finding on, um, like for a variance, you know, you need to find that there's something about the property that's irregular, not shared by the, the rest of the property in the zoning district, you know, that kind of thing, so. That's for you. Um, okay, so I think we can move on to the minutes of the last couple of meetings. Julie, do you have copies of stuff for us to sign, the meeting, the minutes? Did you give them to you?
I don't keep on copy.
Oh, there you go, okay. Um, so John and Chris, since you guys weren't at our last meetings, I don't think you need to vote.
Mm-hmm.
And so we have, uh, meeting minutes from the May thirtieth, two thousand eighteen meeting, and from our June eleventh, two thousand eighteen meeting, both primarily dealing with an application on Philbrook Street. Do you have a motion to approve the May thirtieth, twenty eighteen minutes?
Make a motion to approve the May, what day was it?
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Did I say eighteen?
Two thousand eighteen minutes for the Z B A.
Second.
Seconded by Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, do you wanna make a motion also for approving the June eleventh, two thousand eighteen minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve June eleventh, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes for zoning board of appeals.
I'll second that one too.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Um, today's nine five, is it a five? Yes.
Yes, nine five.
Hey, Jules, this was the last page I was talking about, the last one, just take that off, that was from an old one. Sorry. See if you look at the previous page, I think it was just end, template, pick leftover from an old meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so just take that page off. Thank you. amended.
As amended.
I didn't know what you were talking about.
Yeah, it was like everywhere the end, yeah.
Um, do we have any invoices, Julie?
No.
There on end? All right.
Wow.
Um, so the next topic of discussion was to talk about the budget for this fiscal year. I was not able to get in touch with the Finance Department to actually get the budget and figuring out how much we have and how much, like, what, what we can spend that money on, um, and also to talk about Julie's compensation. So, that's something that, um, we do still need to talk about for going forward. No reason to believe that our budget was not approved at, at least approximate to what it was in the past. But I literally just don't know, 'cause I haven't gotten a response, um.
Was it the same as last year?
Uh, our request-
It was usually two thousand sixty dollars for the past fourteen years.
Yeah, um, I believe I put in a, for a little bit higher than last year, and like in, I think they said don't, don't do more than ten percent increase, so I did a ten percent increase, um, I don't know if we got that, or, but I, I can't imagine that they gave us less than, than last year. And I know our, our application fees cover, for the most part, our obligations to compensate Julie for her work as well as pay the, the legal notices, um, and mailing notice to a butters and stuff. So, I, I wish I had more information to, to actually have a discussion about this, but I don't. So, um, when I, when I do talk to Denise, I will tell her to talk to you guys about-
Uh, is there a way that you could talk to her and ask her if she could, uh, have, um, the accountant give us a breakdown? Every month, we used to get these reports every month telling us, you know, what was spent, um, kinda kept us in line, um, you know, it hasn't been done in a long time, and like I said, it used to be done by the other accountant, so, and it's really helpful-
Okay. Yeah, that would be very helpful.
To have those, uh, reports, and, you know, to be walking in blind.
Yeah, that's a, like, I mean, I never got anything from Tom when things turned over, and I've never been told anything
Yeah.
about anything else ever since, so, um, I will, I'll follow up with her again tomorrow and, um, and do that. and do that. Um so that's kind of all I had for an agenda. Um is there anything else you guys wanna bring up and talk about? Um.
Don't go.
Happening, it's happening though.
Kathy, you're gonna have to work a little harder than that.
How much do we have in the bunch? If it's enough.
No. All right.
I guess that's it, but um if you wanna just send us everything you have and then we can kind of.
Yeah, I will. Um and just so, um so for as far as like meeting schedule, I think I I let you guys know that uh we have the, we typically meet the first Wednesday of the month, or you guys will typically meet the first Wednesday of the month. Um we also have this room on the third Wednesday of the month. Um that is in anticipation of many applications or a continued application if if need be. We've mostly just been meeting the first week of the month. Um and as I was mentioning, we've only had three applications this entire year, um for for good, for bad, I don't know. Um I think, you know, summer's typically slow, but um things might come out of the woodwork now that kind of everybody's sort of back to work and school. Um and Julie will usually uh, you know, you'll get your applications in the mail sometime, like a week to ten days before the meeting to and, you know, if you ever have something that it's a conflict and you can't make a meeting, you know, communication early is the key so that um, you know, we we have in the past been able to have the selectmen appoint somebody to sit on a particular application when we've either had a conflict or just didn't have enough people for a quorum. Um so knowing that well enough, far enough in advance so that you can get on the agenda for the selectmen is important. Um as a five-member board, um it, the decision criteria is that for a variance or a special permit, you need four members voting in favor. Um the board can act with just a quorum of three members, so things like voting minutes and approving invoices is is three members. Um but any kind of application, they all require four votes. Um so hopefully I'll get another member through.
Yeah, that would be good.
We just got two. What do you expect?
We've been very deep.
I know, so great for like thirty seconds. We had a full board. No applications to hear. I don't know. Dan said he might come back, you know, after the summer, so we'll see.
Well, Dan was on the board. He's like, he said he was gonna be an alternate, right?
Yeah.
So if we needed somebody, he could sit in.
He could be an alternate.
So he said he would be an alternate as long as he was a five-member board.
Ah.
Now that the chair's open, you think we'll come back and take Dan?
No, I offered it to him. He said no way.
Uh. It's not a fact. I was talking to him today and he was all, he said hi, so.
He said.
But if it was.
Hi, I'm glad I don't have to go to that meeting. Yeah. Something like that.
Well, but in a pin, like, 'cause there's been a couple of times we've been sort of in a pinch.
Right, where there was a conflict.
We've needed a, right, or there was a conflict or it was mostly you that had conflicts with everybody. No, I'm just kidding. No, but there were a couple of times when Casey had a conflict. It was like in a butter to her house or something.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And if you run into that and you get your application, you gotta speak up right away so that we can find somebody else.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you'll know if if you get the legal notice in the mail also.
Yeah, right. Well, that's true.
That's a dead giveaway.
That's a giveaway.
That's a giveaway.
Just calling and see if it decides.
Or if you have a a conflict of interest, it's your cousin or your brother or something and
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Yeah.
it happens sometimes in small towns.
Right.
You know, so just
Or, yeah.
just give a shout out right away so that we can find somebody ultimate to fill in.
Yep.
Do you guys have any questions?
Not not so far.
Not.
Okay.
Sorry, Casey goes so so soon.
I know, I'm sorry. I barely knew you.
It's been a glorious forty forty minutes here.
Um you you guys have Julie's email now, so she can be your point of contact with, you know, questions about schedule.
Yeah, I need that.
Think so.
I need their email. I mean, I I had your email. I need their, you know, addresses, phone numbers.
Did I? Okay.
I have yours, John.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure I got it somewhere.
All right.
Somewhere on Seven Star Road.
Or if um if you're gonna be away, vacations, that kind of thing, and you can't make a meeting, you know ahead of time, I can show you, let Julie know or somebody know.
And usually when there is any application, we have everyone else.
We, yeah.
Right.
So it's been really slow this year.
We did this special for you.
And we usually, if you already know, we can plan meetings around stuff too.
Right, right. We can always, you can always bump a meeting to the third week, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have enough notice.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause i- it's a forty A, chapter forty A is actually fairly generous, you know, you have sixty-five days to open a public hearing on an application.
I'm going to Canada around.
It's like. What was that?
I don't know. I'm going to Canada, Nova Scotia, in October for a few days, but I think it's around the ninth or tenth.
Okay. Yeah, it should be past the first.
Yeah.
If we have a meeting, it'll be on the third.
The fifth, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, the third.
Okay, so we're good.
But I think we're already even. If we don't have anything now.
At least the order.
It would be Monday would be the
Yeah.
the deadline.
A little bit longer.
Right, so.
The deadline for.
So Julie.
I'm not trying to get at anything, Jason. I'm just trying to give everybody a heads up.
Would you be willing to just send out an email if there are no applications by the tenth?
Normally, we're around.
Just so people don't.
That would, yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, 'cause sometimes I wonder, are there any applications? Am I gonna get one in the mail? I don't know.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice on the tenth, say, oh, nope, we don't have any. We're all set, you know.
Probably eleventh. Probably April the eleventh.
Go have fun. Don't come.
Yeah, well, I think Julie usually comes up on Monday nights, so it's usually the Monday night closest to after the tenth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, whatever.
Which would be the tenth, but.
But yeah, it's good to know a few weeks ahead of time anyway, just like, hey, you don't have to worry about it.
This this week, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, kids. Well, any other questions, topics, or? All right, um so I'll move to adjourn the meeting at eight twelve P M.
Second.
Kathy seconds. All in favor? Aye. Wonderful, thank you.
Aye.
Goodest meeting ever.
Good luck.
Thanks, Charlie.
It was a pleasure.